Good evening and welcome to our January 8th, 2025. So I'm getting that right this time. Tahoe Truckee Unified School District Board Meeting. And our first agenda item is the call to order that we just did. And then we'll do our Pledge of Allegiance. And Superintendent Kramer, would you like to lead it?
Absolutely. Please.
And I will note for our roll call that we have President Driller and Clerk Kennesi not here tonight, but not because they're not interested. They love when we have the spotlight. So I know they're going to go back and watch the meeting and enjoy everything that we get to see in person here today, which takes us to our next agenda item of approval of the agenda. Superintendent Kramer, do we have any changes?
No changes tonight.
And I will note, there was just one edit that I'll get to when we're further down the agenda for 16.1. And the wording for that under Fiscal Services should say Resolution 18-2024/2025. I'll bring that up again later. And can I get a motion to approve our January 8th agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
And a second?
All second.
Great. All approved?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Motion passes. Takes us to our public comment for tonight. Does any member of the public want to present any public comment for our board to consider? Okay, seeing none, we will go to our student representative reports. And it looks like we have North Tahoe High School today and we have... Do we have North Tahoe?
They haven't arrived yet.
No, they haven't? Okay. Why don't we just pause that then? And if they show up, we'll squeeze them back in, which takes us to our Agenda Item 9.1 for our school showcase. And we have Glenshire Elementary. And we have a full team here, so welcome.
I need my notes. Thank you so much for having us, the board and Chief Learning Officer, Superintendent Kramer, and the cabinet. We're so excited to share about our school. I adore Glenshire. I love everything about it. I love the staff. I love the students. I love the community. And it is such an honor to be able to share with you the work we're doing tonight. And this year, we are taking a little bit of a turn from where we've led you in the past. We've talked a lot about literacy. I know we've been referred to as the reading school. And we've talked a lot about SEL and student leadership. And this year, we are venturing into mathematics. I'd like to start with, I believe it was your first year, it was my first year, and we, as a school, identified our values. And we come back to these values in everything we do. And last year, we worked hard on not only identifying our values, but coming up with standards of excellence. How do we know we are living up to these values? And so the values tonight that I really want to speak to, because we have kindness, which we know Glenshire is so kind, it is a safe place to learn. But the four areas that I really want to focus on tonight are the areas of achievement, positivity, community, and integrity, because it takes all four of those together with our staff and our students and our families in order to roll out two pretty large initiatives that we are doing concurrently with each other. Does it go? Okay. We are, like I said, two large initiatives as part of the district alignment towards that academic achievement piece through the strategic plan. The two initiatives are academic discourse, and it's something that we started as a school district before COVID. I was able to go down, Ms. Kramer was the principal, I was the assistant principal, and we went to Cali. And we learned about academic discourse. Then COVID happened. That was weird, online. And then we came back, and that's when we really started our learning. I think our staff was given one training before COVID. And so we came back and we've been doing our learning together, and we found value in that. With that huge initiative, we also have the huge initiative of our new math program. We're using Eureka Math Squared this year after eight years of using everyday math. We had some training in everyday math. Then COVID happened. Then we came back and we were given the opportunity to pilot the Eureka Math Squared last year. And I am just so, yet again, proud of my staff, because we didn't know if we were going to adopt this. We didn't know if this time was going to be wasted, or if this time was going to produce something else. But we knew something needed to change. And every single one of our teachers opened that book. Every single one of our teachers piloted it. We didn't have agreements yet. That's coming up. But they all are working together to align those two things to do what's best for our students. So this really is a celebration of my staff. And that's why most of them, I know I usually have a huge amount of people here, but it is January 8th. We've been in school for three days. They need to be home with their families. But this is a celebration of my incredible, amazing staff. And this quote came to us in the ADAPT training that we just went to. That was a Eureka Math training, and each principal had to go. And this quote stuck with me. It is easy to be an elementary school teacher, but it is difficult to be a good elementary school teacher. And boy, do I have good elementary school teachers. Here are our initiatives. And like I said, we piloted them, and we've been working on them. And for academic discourse, we have come to agreements at our school site. These are the agreements that are going into our instructional handbook. We're creating an instructional framework now at our school. We already created our staff regular handbook for responsibilities. And now we're talking about, who are we? How do we make this system of learning endure beyond us as we all move on into other things in the future? So we've agreed that we all do academic discourse, and we all do academic discourse. Our agreement is, is to leverage about 10 minutes of teacher talk time to every two minutes of student talk time. You may come into a classroom and see 30 minutes of reading and no talk time. Still valid and valuable work. You may come into a classroom and see 30 minutes of teacher talk time for something incredibly important. And then you may see 30 minutes of student talk time, but it's an average. We've agreed to that. We have practiced the Enhanced Pair Share now for three years. The Enhanced Pair Share adds more leverage to students and accountability and gets all of our students, our English learners, our students with disabilities, our SED student groups, all talking and having to talk in class. And we do that from TK through 5th grade. And this year, we have been growing in our practice of developing the stronger and clearer strategy. You'll get to see some of those tonight. Now, for Eureka Math, the district came together with us, offered us the trainings. And as a district, we came up with agreements that we are all doing. And that is, we teach a lesson every day. And at Glenshire, you can see him nodding. We teach a lesson every day. We may repeat a lesson and teach it differently the next day, or we may teach two in one day if our students are grasping it. But every single day at Glenshire Elementary, a math lesson is happening even the day before winter break. We build proficiency with the lesson, doing all four parts, which Mr. Mohegan will share with you what those parts are, and the teachers will share with you what those parts are. But it's called fluency, launch, learn, and land. Teachers are not allowed to cut out a whole section. We call this the recipe. This is the recipe that the teachers take in. We all bake at home. Well, I do. And sometimes I use a little bit more flour, a little bit less flour. That's the magic that teachers use in their lessons. But we all need the flour. We all need the yeast. Those are the parts of the lesson we all have to do. We honor the year-long scope and sequence, and we stay within two to three weeks of pacing district-wide. But at our school site, I can say honestly, we stay within two to three days of each other. Often, Mr. Mohegan and I are walking down the hall, checking into classrooms, and we'll see the same lesson. And we'll see different parts of the lesson as we walk down to each of the classrooms. I see the cabinet is nodding. They've come and watched the same thing. It's pretty incredible. And you see the asterisks at the bottom. We, again, just went to the ADAPT training. And something that was just such an epiphany for our teachers was, hey, you don't have to do all of the fluency lessons. We were doing every part of it. Let's throw in all the ingredients. But we learned, use that exit ticket, analyze the work to inform the fluency activity you use the next day, so you're not using up all of your time practicing that fluency. So I'm talking a lot, so I'm going to move a little faster. I just want to talk about the data. I'm a data girl. I eat data for breakfast. Last year, we piloted the program. We had set a goal of just growing by 4% in math. And we were hoping, because we were like, we're piloting this. We don't have, like, a lot of understanding. We're novices ourselves. And wow, when everyone does the same thing and does it together and supports each other, there is huge growth. We grew by 6%. We exceeded our goal by 2% in mathematics. I am so proud of our staff. So if we can do that without doing it to fidelity with agreements, what can this year look like? So I'm going to invite Mr. Mohegan to speak about what these parts of the program look like, and then we will watch a couple of videos.
So I'll just give a brief overview of the different program components. The fluency is to reinforce foundational math skills as well as prepare for the new concepts of that day. The launch introduces the day's learning objective and the essential question for that day. The learn part, that's really the core, the bulk of the lesson, where new concepts are taught through different activities. And then the land is kind of a culminating discussion, followed by the exit ticket. And then we'll go kind of in-depth with each of these areas. We'll start with Ally Cook with fluency.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm going to talk about the fluency part of the lesson, and then I'll segue into the launch. The fluency part of the lesson is our firsties, first graders' favorite part of the lesson. There is a variety of engaging, fun games or activities. Right now, our firsties' favorite warm-up is green light, red light, where they skip count by ones or by tens, forward and backward. Our firsties also love the game equal or not equal, where they need to determine the unknown total, if it is the same. As teachers, we love the fluency part of the lesson because it is quick, it spirals through the priority standards, and it segues perfectly into the lesson objectives. It is purposeful, and sometimes our firsties pick up on that purpose and that objective. And they'll say halfway through the learn part of the lesson, "We did this in the warm-up." And then after that 10-minute fluency warm-up, the lesson transitions into the launch.
There's a video of the first.
Okay. This is Ms. Cook's class. I literally didn't even say, "Listen to Fox while he's speaking." Love it. Whisper. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Three, two, one. How did you do it, though? How did you do it, though? Autumn, how'd you do it?
So I know nine plus one equals ten. Then I add three more, and it equals thirteen.
Nice job. Let's give Autumn the looking good cheer. You are looking good. Nice job, Autumn. Thumbs up when you got it. I did not know that was going to be me. I literally didn't even say, "Listen to Fox while he's speaking." Love it. So then after the 10-minute fluency warm-up of the lesson, it transitions into the launch. In the launch, a math problem is presented to kickstart the lesson. Students have time to notice and wonder how they're going to tackle the problem and use appropriate tools and strategies. This is the best section of the lesson for academic discourse that Mrs. Cuddell was just talking about. All students are given access to solve the problem with their strategy, which they will then share in their academic conversations. Firsties love to add on, ask questions, and paraphrase their thinking during their math talk. The teacher will then guide students to the lesson objective, which will then transition to the learn part of the math lesson, which is the meat.
As we mentioned, the learn is kind of the core part of the lesson. It's the bulk of time spent here. And these are the activities that teachers use to teach new concepts and address the question of the day. For example, today, I was in a second-grade classroom, and the learn component consisted of, well, the objective was to learn about polygons, right? And identify attributes of polygons using angles and sides and those sorts of things. And then part of the activities were to use dry spaghetti and create the polygon shapes using the spaghetti as the lines. So you have four lines, put the spaghetti together. They also then transitioned using whiteboards, drawing the actual polygons on the whiteboards just to reinforce the learning of the polygons. And so that was one example of the learn component. We're going to watch a video in a second of a kindergarten learn section. And in this video, the teacher actually incorporates the academic discourse as well, again, to help reinforce the learning.
Heart, not your mouth. We know our body parts. Put your cube to your heart. You two are big. Come here. Come here. You're going to be part of the big. When I say go, so right now, you're back to back. Your backs are to each other. When I say go, you will turn around. I'll be your partner. You will turn around. That's okay. You will turn around, and you're going to compare your cube stick with your partner. And you're going to say it like this. Partner A, my four cube stick is shorter than your seven cube stick. Or if it's longer, you'll say, my seven cube stick is longer than your four cube stick. Then Partner B, it'll be your turn. Then you use the number and the cube, and shorter and longer. Show me with your arms. Shorter?
Shorter.
Longer?
Longer.
Okay. You're back to back. Partner B, you're facing the meadow. Partner A, you're facing the kindergarten playground. When I say go, you're going to turn around, and Partner A goes first. Partner A goes first.
Mine's seven. Mine's seven. Cube stick is longer than your eight cube.
Mine's not eight.
No, I have five.
I don't.
Mine's a five.
Mine's one.
Mine's longer than yours. Mine's a seven.
Oh, that's kind of against.
Seven.
But what, I'm seven.
Mine is longer.
Yeah.
You always had one, and I had one.
So that's an example of the learn, which will then lead into the land. And Becky Wright will speak to that.
So the land is our final component. It's such a crucial time to really strengthen and clarify what we've learned, and a chance to kind of clear up any misconceptions that kids might have. We're doing this with academic discourse. It should not be, it's not us standing up there telling the students. They're having the conversations. They're strengthening. They're clarifying, easily hitting that 10 to 2 ratio with academic discourse. It's a really great time to make sure that everyone is leaving with a solid understanding, able to go home and do practice, more practice at home. And part of that component, we use our Jeff Swears training. We use sentence frames. We use our staff PD strategies that we practice, our stronger and clearer. And sometimes it looks different, but we're using that base from Eureka Math. Another part of that is our exit ticket, and that is so important. It is driving the choices that we're making in the moment and the choices that we're making tomorrow in terms of fluency and all the other components. We, at that Eureka Math training, we took students' work and we looked at it. And we found the strengths in that work, and we found things we might do differently. And the kids love doing that. They love talking about that. It's a natural way for kids to have high engagement. Do heavy lifting. We do this anonymously. We don't ever put anyone on the spot. But the cool thing about that is, I've seen students just really grow their confidence, even if they're the one who has the air that's up in front of the class. It's amazing. We won't have their name, but we're up there, and we're talking about the things they did well. And I can see that student just glowing, even though they maybe didn't get the final answer right. They're feeling better about themselves. They're hearing their peers pull out the things they're doing well. Oh, well, this student knows place value really well. This student broke it apart perfectly. Look how well this student lined up their numbers. Or this student definitely knows their multiplication facts, is really fluent, and on and on. And that student is feeling really great about themselves. And we're seeing that high engagement. They're talking about each other's work. And then the other amazing thing with that is, sometimes I'll see that student who made the mistake, no one knows it's them, raise their hand and make their own correction, because they see it now. They're able to kind of take a step back. So that's a really powerful piece, that exit ticket. That data helps us all know. Do we go on? Do we go back in the morning and review something that maybe enough people missed? Is this just a quick poll? I could grab a couple of kids. It really just helps us meet the need of every kid in that classroom. And they're doing that with the conversations, with the sentence frames, with the work that we've done, and the trainings that we've had. It's all coming together. They're taking that ownership and doing that heavy lifting and just really building on each other's ideas. So that's a pretty powerful thing. And helps us make the right choices as educators and support each kid in the classroom.
We have one more video, and this comes from Ms. Wright's classroom, so you can see in action. There's the examples at the top for you to reference as the fourth graders now. So you saw kindergarten, now you get to see fourth grade, to see the change in academic discourse.
To keep Partner B talking about similar.
Okay. One thing I noticed is about in method two and three, you have to multiply, but in method one, you don't. And another thing I noticed was, in method one and method two, the same thing that you said, you have to regroup one.
I guess you have to do a pile of three, but yeah. Yeah. What do you, could you give me an example of what do you mean by, like, regrouping and stuff?
I mean by, like, if you take the hundreds and there's, like, 15, you take 10 of those and you reach to the thousands, and you have five left.
Yeah. Something that I noticed was that you add all of the numbers together in ten. Could you give me an example of how you're going to get those numbers?
So you would, well, it depends on each method, but...
Here, let's take method two.
Two? So you would have to, you know, do the multiplication then.
So in that class, I'm going to highlight, our teachers are putting sentence frames to help the students ask the questions. So in Ms. Wright's room, they're on the back of their little name tag, because they each have a name tag on their desk. In other classes, the teachers might hand them the sentence frames, and they'll pick through them. And they're really being metacognitive about their own thinking and sticking with that student and thinking of the most appropriate question to ask. Can you elaborate on what you used in method two? So they're not just saying, can you elaborate? That's what you would see in second grade. So the progression is just phenomenal. At Glenshire, you can tell what's important to us by where we put our money and where we put our staff. And at Glenshire, we were able, for the first half of this year, to not only provide accelerated math with Ms. Donahue, like we always have, but we were also able to offer math intervention for grades three, four, and five. We were lucky to have an employee who was working until the winter break, just a couple days a week, the magnificent Mrs. Beatty. And the students loved going to see her. So we would give the same pre-assessment to all the students to identify who would go to advanced math. And through that pre-assessment, we were able to identify who needed a little bit extra support to be able to be successful in those math lessons, whether it be number sense or fluency. And then Ms. Beatty would pull them in small groups and work with them. And the students were so disappointed when they didn't have to go work with her anymore. We love Mrs. Beatty. They enjoyed it so much. And what she would do is she would begin each session by repeating the math fluency lesson they learned in class, doing that fluency one more time. We learned that in the training. You can't overdo the fluency. Or she would pull other fluency lessons that she saw matched the student's area of need. And then the program itself comes with its own remediation program, EQUIP. So she would use those lessons from EQUIP to help meet the needs of the students. So we're really looking forward to seeing how that's impacted. I can do a little shout-out to kindergarten. I think 100% of our students, or like 95% of our students, met or exceeded standard on the first big unit assessment that we looked at. So we're seeing some high impact and high achievement from this. So again, coming back to our values, achievement is important to us. That's why we're in school. We got to learn. And the way we do that is by believing that our students can learn at high levels. Each of those teachers believes 100% of their students can and will learn. We're a community. They are all doing this together. We may not be in love with the program yet. It's hard to be in love with a new program when it's your first year, but we're all giving it a good college try, and we're doing it together. And that's where that integrity piece is. We are doing it to fidelity. And fidelity we learned is being loyal. And fidelity is being trustworthy. And being loyal and trustworthy to each other, we are all committed to doing this program. Glenshire, we believe that all, that our students love to learn and learn to achieve. We believe that they can learn and access at high levels. We, they, those teachers, are creating a foundation for college and career readiness, and we have high expectations for all. And so our new goal, look at, look at that number in math, like, whoop, whoop! Glenshire, we're going for 75% this year on the casp. That is our goal, and we really believe we can get there. So thank you, thank you for letting us come. And I never introduced myself. I'm Rachel Cuddell, and I'm the principal, and I'm so proud. And we have gifts, because we know it's technically Appreciation Week for you all.
Thank you so much. It's always so beneficial for our school board to have the school showcases. And I always say, it's one of our favorite things, even when there aren't students, because we still get a glimpse into what's happening in the classroom. And I think, you know, the videos were very telling, very interactive and fun, and high energy. And I loved the confidence piece, because I think the foundational work that happens in elementary school and the work that you do does translate into how those students feel about school as they move forward. And you can just see that in all the interactions in the videos. So so much appreciation for that. Do we have any board comments or questions?
Can I get a copy of your slide deck?
Of course. Of course. If you have it, I'll share.
As always, thank you for coming. And I do want to have a shout-out for all of the art that we have in the room, too, because it's a mix from Glenshire Elementary and Tahoe Lake Elementary. But it's some of the best variety we've seen, and it's just so fun and colorful, and we love it. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. And here are your...
So everyone can see?
Thank you.
We'll have them, that'll be our mascot for the rest of our meeting. We'll have an eagle mascot, which is very appropriate. Great, thank you. So we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is our superintendent's report. Superintendent Kramer?
Thank you, Board Member Nishmaury. Oh, yep. So first, I want to wish our entire Tahoe Truckee community a Happy New Year, Happy 2025. And you might be noticing that the board received some gifts. They have some presents here. And just to the left of the podium, there's a nice "Thank You, School Board" poster, because January is School Board Appreciation Month. I'd like to celebrate our incredible school board. We are proud to recognize them each January and acknowledge their selfless service. They strive to provide a better, safer, and more welcoming learning environment for students in our community every day. You guys are a thoughtful, genuine board that puts students first. Your dedication and collaborative spirit are inspiring. So thank you, TCU SD Board of Education, and DeeDee and Chris, also, when you're watching, for your outstanding work serving our young people. So thank you.
for your outstanding work serving our young people. So thank you, Board. And next, on that picture there was at one of our spotlight visits. So the board will visit Glenshire Elementary next Tuesday, and this was our visit at Truckee Elementary with Principal Galis and Vice Principal Sarah DePrinzio were in the picture, as well as the board. So our board's very dedicated. They love going to visit the schools and seeing all this learning in action. So next, in my update, um, I'm gonna highlight two priority areas in our district strategic plan. I'll keep looking at Lipita. I have the controller. There we go. So tonight, I'm gonna highlight um, uh, support systems and community connections. So in October and November, our staff had the opportunity to participate in anonymous morale and wellbeing survey, and we received the results. And I just highlighted a few data points up there. And we are doing this survey year after year because the district is committed to really continuing to develop our systems and infrastructure uh, so that our staff is empowered to reach their full potential and that they feel, find great joy and satisfaction in working in the district, no matter what their position is. So our um, COM committee, the Collective Action of Labor and Management, they're gonna really dig into the data starting tomorrow afternoon. So we have CSCE members, TTA members, and district uh, leadership members there, and we'll dig into this, and we'll keep sharing the results out with all of the staff. But we had some growth. Uh, one thing we're really looking at is work-life balance. Last year in November, only just over half of our district staff in entirety were satisfied with their work-life balance, and it went up 10%. So we're up to 66%. We would love, of course, to be at 100%, but we're heading in the right direction. And we're also really happy to see that our staff um, still feels connected with each other and with their students, and that they're committed to helping with one another. And you certainly heard about that in the Glenshire showcase, the way they're dedicated to working as a team. And then the last one there, that our staff feels like they belong to the district and really, when they're at a school site, very connected with their site as well. So we're excited about the results. There's lots of data. The board just got a snippet. The initial um, report is 35 pages long, so COM has a lot of work to do to dig in. But we really appreciate all the staff that participated in the survey. We know that there's survey fatigue, but thank you for giving us the input. We do use it to try to make systemic changes. The other opportunity I want to highlight tonight is in our Community Connections um, Strategic Focus area, and it is another survey. So we're asking staff and families and our older students to participate in our annual district survey. And this data will help inform our Local Control and Accountability Plan, called the LCAP. So each year, we adopt that plan that really um, gets into the more of the nuts and bolts. We have the District Strategic Plan guiding things, but then the LCAP really gets into the details. And we will review annual goals for student achievement, wellbeing, and um, all of our systems. So your anonymous responses will directly inform the decisions made by schools and district administration as we move forward. So we encourage everyone to take the survey, and it's open till January 24th. And then in closing, I'd like to share that our next board meeting on January 22nd will be held at Tahoe Lake Elementary School. We like to be on the lakeside once a year, and that will be Tahoe Lake Showcase. So we're gonna be in their historic auditorium, so if you'd like to come in person, that's where we'll be. And we heard that maybe snow is returning that week, so we will see what happens. But that concludes my update for tonight.
Great, thank you. I think we all are looking forward to potentially seeing some snow, even though sometimes the morning weather watches is maybe not the most fun thing to do in the mornings. Um, we do function on snow in this community, so there's some benefit to that. Um, and thanks for the great update, particularly fun to start off the year with a survey. So I hope everyone gets a chance to participate in that. Uh, that will take us to our next agenda item, which is recognition of contribution to educational community. Superintendent Kramer.
And it is my pleasure to welcome up some important community members, if they don't mind joining me up at the podium tonight. We are celebrating um, the support we received from the Truckee Optimists Club and their incredible contributions to our school site. So we, tonight, we have President um, Dr. Todd Wold, and we have Treasurer Pat McKechnie, and we have Board Member Jane Loomis, and a Board Member Sonia, I believe. So if you don't mind meeting me up there. So it is our honor tonight, and thank you for coming out. I know evening events can be hard when you worked all day. And these, this is a representation of a mighty group. I believe there's probably about 50 to 80 members at this time of the Optimists Club. So the Optimists Club, the Truckee Optimists Club was chartered in November of 1971. And for over five decades, they provided financial support for our local youth programs. And so tonight, we're extending our deepest appreciation for their generous financial contributions to our school district over these last five decades. And what our board noticed is that at nearly every board meeting, we have the honor and privilege of accepting an Optimist grant supporting one of our programs. And something we want the community to know is that we deeply appreciate the support. And in the fiscal year of 2024, your club contributed $75,000 to student programs. So these contributions range from like, funding the stadium lights for Truckee High for all of the evening Friday Night Light events, football and soccer and so on. There's a campus beautification project happening at Truckee Elementary School, thanks to your donations. Um, the graduations at all of our schools, the Optimists Club supports, our eSports club. I mean, the list just goes on and on. So we are so grateful for all that you do for our community and for our youth. And one thing I was really struck by as I was preparing for tonight is your Optimists Club pledge. There's eight to 10 statements that the Optimists Club kind of lives by. And the one that stood out to me that you're really all exemplifying with this generosity is this pledge. "To be just as enthusiastic about the success of others as you are about your own." And so you are constantly supporting the success of our students. So thank you for helping our student programs to thrive by providing enriching experiences for students and youth across the entire district. So on behalf of the governance team and the T2SD students, thank you for your generosity and amazing support.
So thank you very much. I don't know if any of you would like to say anything tonight. You certainly are not obligated.
May I?
Oh, please, yes.
All right. I mean, gotta put in a shameless plug, right? I mean, there might be people on TV, you never know. Um, Truckee Opti- all four of us happen to be school district employees. We are not all school district employees in the club, but a lot. A lot of us are. Um, but that being said, um, our major fundraisers are the um, Air Show, which typically happens at the end of June, and so we appreciate your support. It's not gonna happen in '25 because they're gonna be repaving um, part of the airport, uh, but it'll be back in '26. Uh, we also have the Truckee Brew Fest, which is the second Saturday in July. There are non-alcoholic options for those of you who don't partake. Um, we have live band, music, food trucks. It's a great event all day long. Be responsible, be safe, get a DD if you need to. Um, and then we also have the Christmas Tree Lot, which is um, over there by Village Pizzeria. Um, we do have locally cut trees, which helps out with our fire danger here. Uh, but we also bring uh, some nice firs down from Oregon as well. Uh, and then this year, we're adding another one, um, Labor Day weekend. At the end of August, beginning of September, we're gonna have a pickleball tournament. Uh, so if any of you guys are pickleballers, or you know anybody who would like to visit Truckee in order to come play pickleball for the weekend, uh, we'll have that going on as well. So appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Just wanna play. Um, do we have any other board comments about the Sir Optimists?
I do, yeah. I just wanna thank the Optimists again for the generosity. And as uh, um, uh, Superintendent Kramer was saying, it seems like every agenda, there is some kind of uh, grant or donation from your organization uh, to uh, the student programs. And it's uh, it's, it's really wonderful, and it's heartwarming as well. And I also want to acknowledge the hard work it is for you to um, raise the funds that you uh, that you then turn around and give to the community, donate to the community. Uh, the Brew Fest, though, looks like a lot of fun. That's a nice sunny day and, you know, great company. Um, but I have been at that Christmas tree lot, boy, I've been out there on some, I've seen you guys out there, and they're your volunteer students, on some pretty bad, rough days. And I gotta hand it to you for, for being out there and doing that. Uh, we have a, we got a lovely tree from you this year. Thank you very much. And um, but yeah, I know it's a lot of hard work to raise those funds, so thank you for that as well.
Yeah, I think, just to add on to what Pat was saying, um, we were excited to have the opportunity to put you on the agenda, one, so you could plug the good work that you do, but also for us to highlight for the community how much support you do provide. So even though we're saying at every agenda, thank you, thank you, we really just wanted to spotlight it even more so, so that the community has an understanding of how important the work is that you do and what it means to the district. So thank you guys so much for coming, and we really, really appreciate it. All right, we will go to our next agenda item for grants. And our first one is for the Rotary Club of Truckee for Mobile Vision Van.
And for this item, we will turn to our Executive Director of Student Services, Dr. Anna Marie Cohen.
Thank you, Superintendent Kramer, Board of Trustees, and community. The Rotary Club of Truckee has generously provided a grant in the amount of $3,000 to be used to partner with Vision to Learn, a mobile vision van that provides comprehensive eye exams and glasses to children on, onsite at their schools. This organization has been offering resources to students in low-income families since 2015. Our school nurse team has been exceptionally resourceful in looking for opportunities for our students in T2SD to have access to local services that will provide much-needed vision services and access to glasses in our region where access to care is limited to only one provider in our community. It is staff's recommendation that the Board of Trustees accept this grant for $3,000 from the Rotary Club of Truckee in order for T2SD to partner with Vision to Learn.
Great, thank you. Do we have any questions or comments?
Only we're lucky, uh, this district with the generosity of our community.
Well, and I, I feel like too, you know, vision in particular is one of those things that if a student's having struggles with their vision, they will struggle with reading, math, everything that they need to be successful in the classroom. And sometimes that's an easy thing to overlook, that kid can't always express, like, this is what I'm seeing, and is it different than what other kids see? So um, having that opportunity for screening is just hugely important for student success, I feel like. So this is um, a great opportunity. With that, can I get a motion to accept the grant?
I'll move to accept the Rotary grant.
In a second.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, motion passes, and we will go to uh, 12.2.
And for this item, we'll turn back to Dr. Cohen.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Excellence in Education has generously donated a $3,063.76 grant to build the preschool classroom library for fifth-grade reading buddies and provide a gift book to each fifth-grade buddy that participates in reading with our preschool students. It is staff's recommendation, the Board of Trustees accept this grant for $3,063.76 from Excellence in Education to support the reading buddies program.
Another. But another awesome opportunity too. Do we have any questions or comments about this one? No? Um, great. Much appreciation, as always, for um, all these opportunities that were given with our grants. Um, can I get a motion to accept the grant?
I'll move to accept the Excellence in Ed grant.
In a second.
All second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Great. Let's see, now we will go on to our um, association reports.
Well, the good news is that both associations reported in that there was no new news, mostly because we've been on winter break. But they say Happy New Year to everyone, and they look forward to being here to report out in February.
That's great. Makes for a streamlined agenda, and hopefully they're enjoying their time off also. So now we have our consent agenda, which we have two items. We have the Personnel Action Report and also the new administrative regulations, which we reviewed at the last board meeting. Um, and are there any changes to the consent agenda?
Not from staff.
Any from our board members? You wanna pull or change anything? Any member of the public want to pull any of the consent agenda items? No? Um, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Nope, that's good. Now we will go on to sort of our last major business item under Fiscal Services for review, five-year review of the developer fee findings.
Thank you. And for this item, we'll turn to our Assistant Superintendent Chief Business Officer, Mr. Todd Rivera.
Thank you, Superintendent Kramer, members of the board. Um, so this is the title change that you mentioned earlier in the board meeting. Um, I apologize for that, but um, it actually should read um, Resolution, Review and Approve Resolution Number 18, 2024-25. And um, excuse me. This is a resolution of the Board of Education regarding accounting of developer fees for fiscal year 2023, 2024. And this is an annual report we do bring to the board. Um, as you may know, the district does collect um, fees on new residential and commercial development that occurs within the district boundaries. Um, we are required as a part of collecting fees um, that we must report annually the collection and expenditures of those fees. And this is a little different than we've done in the past. And in the past, we've always um, had um, just an annual report that we presented and um, and the board approved it, and our legal counsel has suggested that we kind of change the format of that a little bit into a resolution. Um, so with this, I just wanted to highlight um, really quickly the kind of the differences and what the resolution incorporates. Um, so the resolution incorporates the annual report, which I'll present here in a second, um, but also cites the related code requirements pertaining to the collection of developer fees as a public agency. Um, so included in this resolution, you will see um, sightings of our past resolutions that allowed us to collect the developer fees and the current fee levels. Um, also, the approval of our developer fee justification study, which provides the nexus or the relationship between the school, the impact on the school district and any new development within our boundaries. Um, in addition, we also are talking a little bit about um, the requirements of this annual report and also what's called the five-year finding. So you'll find that all in the resolution. And basically, we're just making sure that we're complying with all the requirements. Um, and they've made some changes to some of the codes, so we want to make sure we capture all that. So with that, our current fees. We're currently charging $3.69 for all, on a per-square-foot basis, for all new residential construction. Um, we also can, collect uh, fees on commercial industrial development as well. And um, the maximum that we can collect on that particular type of development is 61 cents. However, we do separate the different types of commercial industrial development to different categories. And the reason for that is, is um, it, commercial fees are kind of based on more of an indirect um, impact to the district. So what that looks like, what that looks at is when we have new commercial development within the district boundaries, um, they look at how many employees that generates. And then a byproduct of employees generated is students generated, which creates. which creates a need for additional accommodation in our schools. So our maximum that we can charge on commercial lodging is 26 cents per square foot. Industrial parks is 38 cents. And then community shopping centers are, is at 40 cents, and restaurants at 59 cents. And then self-storage has the lowest employee generation rate because it's essentially one employee for a huge amount of space. So that's only a cent, one cent per square foot. And then in addition to our statutory fees that we charge, we also have various mutual benefit agreements where the district has, in lieu of the statutory fees, had established an agreement with the developer prior to the development. And so there's various amounts. We only have a couple remaining right now that are mutual benefit agreements. One is Gray's Crossing, the other is La Hotten Two, and I think there's one other ones. But they all have different fee structures according to whatever the agreement was in place at the time. So as part of the requirement of this report, we are required to show what the beginning balance of our developer fee account is, and we are required to hold this in a separate account from what our general fund is. And one thing I should also mention is the developer fees are to be used specifically for capital improvements that are related to either new construction, expansion, or modernizations of our campuses. And then we also have to show how many, how mu, how much in fees that we collected during the '23-'24 year. We collected just over $1.65 million. And then the interest accrued associated with that, which for us was about $168,000. And then this fair market value adjustment, we've talked a little bit about this at year-end closing. This is just a recognition of the market value of our, our county pool and the treasury. So it's not technically real revenue, but we do have to make that as a notation in our books. And then our expenditures, total expenditures, $2,280,574.37. And you will see that our annual collections actually is less than our expenditures. We are seeing that trend right now with our developer fee collections. In the past, we were collecting in the $2 to $2.5 million range. It went down a little bit about in '23-'24, and we're seeing the same trend this year as well. However, we do have a balance, so we'll be able to cover our obligations for the next several, several years. So our ending balance right now is $2,639,430.91. And then the other part of the required report is to show what we spent the money on. So with our 2023-24 expenditures, we're allowed to utilize about 3% of our collections towards just the administration of fees. So that really does go to staff time, our administrative assistant that collects and tracks all the developer fees throughout the year. And then a large, the largest expenditure that we do have is our obligation for our 2019 COP debt service at just over $1.8 million. And that will be a continued, developer fees will be a continued funding source to pay off those COPs. And we'll see how long that goes out to here in just a minute. State School Facility Program Management, that is funding that we seek through applications to get, funding to do modernizations and new construction through the State School Facilities Program. And then we also do have some bond administration and continuing disclosure that was a result of our last bond campaign in 2014. And then facilities, master planning and project planning, a big portion of that $386,000 was related to our master plan and the contract for that, in addition to project management and other planning that we're doing for future projects. And then we have this small amount for a Kings Beach lot lease, and that is just our annual agreement that we have with the church in order to utilize their parking lot. So total expenditures, just under $2.3 million. And then looking at our mutual benefit agreements that I mentioned earlier, our beginning balance was just over $1.9 million at the start of last year. We received about $90,000 in additional revenue through those mutual benefit agreements. And then we had 275, just under $276,000 in expenditures, leaving us with a balance of $1.73 million roughly. And I should also cite that the expenditures that are coming out of this fund are being used exclusively right now for our indoor field house that we constructed at Truckee High School, so. So five-year findings, also a part of the requirements of collecting development impact fees is that we have to look at our collections on a five-year window. So looking at that, it's kind of like first-in, first-out accounting. You have to, when we collect a fee, the expectation is that we'll expend that fee within a five-year period. And so we have to kind of do a look back to see the fees that we collected in the 2018-19 year, have those been fully expended as of 2023-24? And we, we usually don't have an issue with this. We have expended all those fees that we collected back, looking back five years during that fiscal year. But if you do have unexpended fees, then you're still allowed to withhold them and keep them. It's just you have to have a, a plan and make certain findings. And it's usually related to future projects that you're saving up for. So at this point, we did not have any five-year findings technically. However, we did go an extra step and just wanted to look at our future outlook as far as developer fee collections and what we've earmarked those funds for. So looking at a five-year findings table here, as I mentioned before, we didn't really officially have findings, but we want to identify some of the future projects. So the 2019 COP debt service, that's going to be an ongoing thing. We'll be funding with developer fees. And the total amounts of funding when we finally pay this off completely is about $33.4 million. And that timeline goes all the way out to June of 2043. So we'll, we'll be paying that for a while unless we can find other funding sources to make some, some larger payments against the principal. And then in addition, we do have plans in our master plan to do some portable removable classroom addition at Glen Shire Elementary School. That's one of the major priority projects for us. So looking at that and looking at how much would we contribute from developer fees, generally, projects like that, developer fees contribute a fairly small percentage. So we're estimating about 5%. And then the balance of that, which the approximate project costs is, is $37 million, would be funded with a future bond. So in that, we've, we've talked about when these funds might be available for this particular project. And we're looking at a potential future bond proceeds in 2029. That's when we would probably start expending money if we went out for a 2028 bond campaign. And then in addition, we're also looking at making improvements to Alder Creek Middle School to replace the portable classroom wing and make some additional classroom additions. And on this, we're estimating about 1%, 1% in developer fees, and the remaining would be funded through a future bond campaign. And that's all we had, is there any questions?
Does the board have any questions? No? I read these reports a lot, and I appreciate the move to having this as a resolution because I think for tracking purposes, it's very helpful that you can have the report kind of in one concise place. Not that the community is wholly paying attention, but our development community often will pay attention to what their fees are going towards. So they do want to have an understanding that there is a nexus and a correlation that's happening between the fees that they're paying on behalf of the projects that they do and what contributions those have in the community. So it's really just a beneficial report. There's always a balance. I mean, I think the state's sort of toying with this notion that everything's gotten very expensive, and are these fees still the direction we should be going? I think they'd have to find an adequate replacement if they decided for some reason that, you know, they want to change government code section to not collect these fees anymore. But it's definitely on the legislator's radar at this point about how to make just development in general cheaper to incentivize particularly housing projects. So it's something that a lot of just cities and counties are monitoring to try and take a look at. So, but this is a great snapshot, I think, for everyone to kind of understand that the fees do have a, have an impact on budget and ability for jurisdictions to be able to build new infrastructure to support students. So I thought it was really well done.
Thank you. Yeah, yes, and we are very reliant on developer fees. It's really, outside of general, general obligation bonds, it's really our only funding source to do improvements. And one of the things that this resolution also kind of touches on a little bit is Senate Bill 937, which was recently passed in legislation in September. It was kind of a surprise to some of the other public agencies that do collect development, development impact fees. And what it, what it did is it changed the timelines in which public agencies are allowed to collect fees on certain types of residential development. And with the, what happens right now is most public agencies, and there's quite a, quite a lot of different public agencies that do charge impact fees, they collect fees in advance at the time prior to building permit issuance. And what Senate Bill 937 says now is that for these certain types of developments, you have to collect it at the certificate of occupancy, which is a quite of a long delay in getting those fees to make your infrastructure improvements that you need to. There is exemptions, however, for school districts, and we do qualify for that. One of the requirements or criteria is that we have an adopted master plan that has certain criteria and components included in that, which we do, and we have adopted that as a board. In addition, if you're utilizing current funding sources for developer fees for construction that you've already, you're kind of paying it back, that's another qualifying criteria, and that's where our COPs come in to play. We, we issue debt in order to do construction improvements that now we're having to pay for in, throughout the future. So that is touched a little bit on this with our approval of our master plan in the resolution, and also talking about that we're using funds to pay off previously issued debt or capital improvements that we paid for.
Thanks, that was always very informative. So this is an action item, so would we, does anyone want to make a motion to adopt? Sorry, losing my, adopt the resolution. So this is, it's not written on your sheet. So it'd be adopting Resolution 18-2024-2025 for the developer fee findings.
I'll move to adopt it.
That's what I was hoping for.
Thank you, I'll second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Great, see, we work together as a team there, that was perfect. And with that, it takes us to our last agenda item of our regular board meeting of board member comments. Trustee Mooney, do you want to start?
Well, I had a great break, and the high school ski racing season has started. North Tahoe High School and Truckee High School dominated the first two races at Palisades before the break. They raced again today at Borial, but I do not yet have the results. Hope to get them tonight. So go see ski races, it's fun.
That's exciting. Nothing else? I don't really either, other than thanks for letting me run the meeting tonight. And to President Triller and Clerk Kennesi for normally running the meetings because it's a lot more to think about when you're in here. But with that, we will adjourn at 6:34.